I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 11th, School Board Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Ayers.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hirons.
Here.
Ms. Kidby.
Here.
Ms. McCosker.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. We will start with our moment of silence and we will have the North Stafford Air Force ROTC present our colors. This will be led by cadets Landry Mofo, Noah Deaton, William Laws, and Rachel Brookover. We thank them for that. So if everyone would rise for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's always wonderful to have our colors presented by our students. And again, we want to thank the North Stafford High School Air Force ROTC this evening. Moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
May I?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and the agenda is approved. Moving on to citizen comments this evening. Anybody who has already signed up, I will call out, and then anyone else who would like to speak, feel free to go ahead and line up behind that individual, and then we will just go through one by one after that. Individuals wishing to comment at this time, you may come forward if, after those that have been signed up, and then I will make a general invitation, but it will help if you are signed up and lined up. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see there is a stoplight up there. Green means to begin. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining. Red, your time is expired. You have five seconds to wrap up. The Chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the Board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the Chair. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against Division employees or programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. At this time, I have one person signed up, Ms. Dana Brown, and then anyone else who would like to speak after that, please line up.
First line.
Oh, sorry, the drum majors actually are first. Ms. Brown, Mrs. Brown, I am so sorry. It was written so neatly that I didn't catch it. So my apologies. So I would like to invite the Stafford County Public School Drum Majors and Band Captains forward at this time. Sorry.
Stafford County Band Parents Associations for Band Together to Fight Hunger. I'm very proud to introduce to you Chairman Hazard, Vice Chair Egan, Dr. Benson, and members of the Board, our Drum Majors and Senior Leaders, who'll be leading this year's Band Together to Fight Hunger. Tonight, I get to introduce to you Ms. Gina Demola and Jacob Mitchell from Brookpoint High School, Ms. Caroline Bingham, Mountain View High School. Then we have a senior representing North Stafford tonight. We have Mr. Joey Kelly. Then we have Shane Dabbler and Becca Milson from Stafford High School.
Hello, my name's Gina. We are here tonight to cordially invite each of you to join us on Monday evening, November 7th, at 7:00 PM at Mountain View High School for our sixth annual Band Together to Fight Hunger. If it should rain, this event will be held Monday, November 14th. As a service project to our community, all five of our high schools are continuing to band together to fight hunger.
Hi, I'm Jacob. Band Together to Fight Hunger is an exciting showcase of our own talented musicians from all of our high schools. This is the only time during the year where in less than two hours, you can have the opportunity to hear and see all five high school marching bands in concert.
I'm Caroline. Nonperishable canned food donations and monetary donations are gladly accepted. Last year, with the support of our Stafford community, we were able to provide over 21,000 meals back to our surrounding communities. This year, our goal is to provide 25,000 meals for the hungry citizens in our area. Did you know that Virginia only has seven food banks in the entire state? Our Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank serves Caroline Fredericksburg, King George, Spotsylvania, Stafford, and Locust Grove. It's incredible that we are able to touch the lives of so many adults and children in all of these surrounding counties by giving back for just one night.
By partnering with the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, we were able to reach 80 different partner agencies or food pantries. Our food bank is the storehouse for the food and other products collected. From there, donations are distributed to our local food pantries to be given directly to people in the community. We are counting on you to join us on November 7th with your nonperishable food donations. Your donation goes to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, who supports all 14 of our Stafford food pantries.
After our on-field presentation to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, attendees will be treated to the grand finale when all of our bands will band together to fight hunger. Can you imagine 400-plus high school band students on the field playing together? Yes, it is amazing.
Please don't forget to bring your nonperishable food donation to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, too. Thank you for your time this evening and your continued commitment to our band programs. We look forward to seeing you on Monday, November 7th at 7:00 PM.
I can't believe you just busted.
Thank you so much. I know all the Board members here have been there, and really, it's such an incredible night, so I hope that we'll meet that 25,000 meals. So thank you so much, and so enjoy your programs Friday nights.
See you next month.
See you next, that's right. I apologize, Mrs. Brown, you are next. Would you like to say? And if there is anyone else who wishes to speak, feel free to come on up and line up.
My name's Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in the Rock Hill District. I wanted to talk about just three things tonight, just a couple of comments. One's on the calendar, one's on the redistricting proposals, and one's on Signature Program Night. Tonight, I didn't find out about your work session until I actually went to go print the agenda, because on the website, under the calendar, it only mentions a 7 o'clock meeting. And when you click on the calendar itself for the month, it still only mentions a 7 o'clock meeting. And people might have wanted to know, since you guys were talking about redistricting, so maybe we could make sure that we put that on the front page of the website, because I really like to come to work sessions, because they're not televised. So that was that. And since we're talking about redistricting, it's my opinion, that last time you did one, that your process was not very good. Actually, it was pretty bad. And I know Supervisors Court Sterling, at the time, and Meg Bunkie offered you some really good advice, which you decided not to take. And that advice was to use an uninterested third party for the committee. Take parent input, of course, but have the party made, like Ms. Egan said, by someone with no dog in the fight. I think the recommendations seem to come like that. That'll, I think, alleviate a lot of the hurt feelings and the angst that you guys had to suffer. I implore you to, this time, consider doing that. And the other thing I want to talk about was, in the redistricting, we all know that Forge is overcrowded, has been for years. Enrollment has been closed for transfers. Now, I know there's a special policy for employees, and I know we like to please our employees, and I like that, too. However, nobody should be transferring into a school that has closed enrollment. I mean, it's one thing for an employee to take their kids over there when there's room, but when there's no room to put their kids in there, that's wrong. Because the kids that have to go there because they live there, that makes it harder for them. And then the last thing pertaining to the calendar was, I noticed when I was looking on it tonight, that we have Signature Program Night listed for this month. Now, we are in our fifth week of school, somewhere like that. I can't believe we're talking about next year already. So I hope it's not an attempt to stave off another program review like we've been promised for a couple of years. So I know that sometimes we, staff likes to get that, you know, Signature Program Night in and promise all the parents, this is what you're going to get next year. Well, we haven't started budget, we're just rolling into that, don't know what monies we're going to have. Dr. Benson has promised us a program review for three years now. Maybe we should do that before we start in the fifth week of school, promising what we're going to give them next year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board? Seeing nobody leaping over the seats to come up here, I will then close public comment. I will be moving on. We will next move to Board Member Comments. Our first Board Member this evening, Ms. Kidby.
Ms. Kidby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of my fellow Board Members are aware, I am going to be leaving Stafford County, and therefore required to terminate my position as the Garrisonville Rep. at Stafford County School Board. My last public meeting will be in November, and this was not, not an easy decision for my husband and I, since we have come to love this county and its residents. We've been here for 25 years. It's been an honor, an absolute honor, to serve the residents in the Garrisonville District since 2005. We have been Park Ridge Pups, we've been H.H. Pool Mustangs, we've been North Stafford High School Wolverines. Four of my six children graduated from North Stafford High School, one of the finest high schools in the state of Virginia, am I pronouncing? I can't begin to enumerate all the wonderful events and activities that I've had, the privilege of participating in over my tenure on the Board. I've watched this county grow and develop into little one-lane roads to, what are we going to have now, six lanes on 610? And we're a thriving community, and this Stafford County Public Schools is thriving with it. I'm so proud of this school system and what it's become, and particularly the guidance that we have now under Dr. Benson. It's going to be very difficult for us to leave, but our kids are all grown, and we're rambling around into this great big six-bedroom home, and we need to downsize, and the West is calling us. So we're heading west, and it's with a heavy heart that I'll be leaving this beautiful area, and my fellow Board Members that I've come to respect and enjoy, and certainly the staff. With that in mind, over the next 45 days, I'm going to be a little busy. So I am not going to be able to participate in the two standing committees that I've been assigned to, the Fab Committee and the Governance Committee. So with that in mind, Madam Chair, you may want to have some alternates or somehow restructure those committees so that they can properly function. That's all I have for this evening.
Indulge the Chair for a moment. I'm sure each Board Member will say many things. We will be very sad to see you go in it. But we will move on with all the good work that you've been involved with. To my Board, at the next work session, which will be in two weeks' time, we will discuss the procedures with dates and such. I believe, Ms. Kidby, that you will be officially leaving us on November 30th. So I would say to the Board, our 45-day clock runs then. So I would say to the public, those of you in the Garrisonville District, we would like to make sure that you apply. There will be probably at least a month open, but we will certainly, as the Board, get that out there quickly. But there is plenty of time for those to apply. So I would like to say we will be coming up with our calendar in two weeks' time. With regard to the standing committees, I believe Ms. Kidby serves on the Finance and Budget and the Governing Committee. These are actually, as we learned tonight, several, lots of things going on at this time of year. So we want to have our committees filled. So is there any interest on filling those positions right now tonight?
Madam Chair, if you'll allow me, I'd like to repay Mr. Hirons for his suggestion that I'd be the timekeeper on these new timed agendas, and I would like to nominate him for the Finance and Budget Committee.
Yay. It's something that...
Do you need a second?
No, I know.
I served previously, and I stepped off per the requirement of bylaws, but there's no requirement for length of period to be off, and I would be really excited to be back on.
Good. Not to twist the arm either.
So is that, so is the will of the Board, we would vote to add Mr. Hirons to the Finance and Budget Committee as a member? All those in favor? You say aye? Any opposed? Congratulations. Moving on to Governance, we also then have an opening on that committee. Is there any, either volunteer or anybody who wants to stick it to somebody? That time? Anybody want to jump up?
I don't know what's going on.
If not, we can have two people on the committee. We do have an alternate as well. So if you, I mean, if we need to, we can leave that open, but I'm hoping for volunteers at some point. So everybody think about it. Okay. Moving on, I will move on to Mr. McCosker. Is that, are you okay to go next?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, I have one item. The Gifted Committee met last week. The Parent Workshop Series on Gifted Students took place on October 4th at Margaret Brent Height Elementary School. There were four sessions covering characteristics of gifted children, social-emotional development, identification, and the Destination Imagination Program. October 10th is a Professional Development Day for all middle-school gifted teachers. Thank you very much, Dr. Benson and Melanie Daniel and crew. That is, that's a good thing. October 19th is SAT Day for grades 8 through 12. Grades 8 and 9 will take the PSAT grades, 10 and 11 will take the NMSQT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and grade 12 will take the SAT. The exams are free to the students. You know, and that's a big deal. We do pay a little bit of money in this county to allow our kids to take, you know, that very, very important test, and I hope we continue to do that, because it does cost a little bit of money. But, you know, these are the tests that really will help students get into colleges. The number of 12th-grade students will take the SAT digitally as part of the College Board's digital pilot. So that's something that I have to look more into. Summer residential governor school applications are now available from the Department, Virginia Department of Education. Upcoming field experiences for focus kids. Third grade is going to dig and discover at Ferry Farm for its archaeological unit. The fourth-grade students are going to the National Air and Space Museum Annex at Dulles for its Physics of Flight Unit. The countywide middle-school debate night will take place November 15th from 6:30 to 8:30. I don't have a location for that, which middle-school. Destination Imagination Teams are beginning to form, and the team managers' training will take place on November 5th. Please let me know if you have questions, but specifically let Ms. Melanie Daniel know if you have any questions on the gifted and talented folks. The next gifted and talented meeting is 11:07 here at the Bandy at 6:00 PM, the School Board Office here. And a special thank you to Ms. Jamie Olet and the gifted and talented team for always writing these notes up for me to read. They do a great, a super job, and, you know, Stafford County is doing very, very well with supporting the gifted and talented program, as they do on the spectrum of kids. And so, you know, we should be very proud of that. Thanks.
Ms. Healy.
Mr. McCosker, did you want to bring up Veterans Day as a holiday?
Sure, about the 12-month employees? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There is, there is one, there is one issue that we might want to have the Board, or maybe Dr. Benson, take another look at, and I've talked to Bruce about it. He, I think he'll get with all of us, but right now, Veterans Day, currently the 12-month employees are still working. So the students and teachers are off, but the 12-month, you know, the janitors that are 12-month at the school, and, you know, and all the folks, principals, and they're still... And so, you know, maybe it was I missed the boat on it, on the vote, but I was under the impression that we voted to give Veterans Day off to everyone. So being that it's 12-month employees that are, for the most part, are under direct supervision of Bruce, he does have that opportunity, I think. Maybe, maybe not. He was going to talk, I guess there's some contractual things that I didn't know about, about 12-month employees as opposed to 10 and 11. And so I know Mr., Dr. Benson is going to talk to all of us about that, but I have fielded some questions saying, I thought you guys gave me off, and so with that, thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome. And I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, for discussion, if it's possible to make that a holiday across the Board for the employees. I certainly think, you know, they deserve it, and it was our intention in making Veterans Day a holiday, that all of our employees, as well as our students, be able to celebrate that important day, you know, with their families or other activities in the community. Just very quickly, the Band Together Against Hunger is absolutely unbelievable, if you've never been there. The only time I missed, I was literally out of the country and, you know, couldn't make it. So I highly recommend that everyone come, and Mrs. Bingham, you know, did not mention, because I'm sure she's too modest, but she spends an incredible amount of time coordinating this and just making it happen. It is such a wonderful example of what we do in our schools, and, you know, the talent of our students, and the support of the parents. I mean, it is a show, you know, unlike any other I've seen. I keep thinking, oh, my gosh, that's just the best. And then the next one comes on, and I don't care what school it is, they are all so amazing. So I would encourage, you know, everyone that can to go, to bring food, and also to put the word out in the community, if there's any way our strategic, you know, communications plan can make that clear, that this is not just for school people and, you know, parents, who will certainly be there, particularly the band parents, because they'll be there working, but for all members of the community, you know, that they're all welcome to come. And I'll save my remarks about Mrs. Kidby for a later date. She and I have always had fun. Can I say that, Nanette, maybe? We've, we've been through a lot over the years, and I admire and respect her greatly, and particularly that math, that math and educator background. So, you know, we'll hold those thoughts for a later date. Thank you.
Send them in, too.
Ms. Egan.
Well, I'll start off by saying, we'll miss you, Nanette, greatly, and thank you for your service. I'm sure your constituents are very pleased with the service that you've provided for them. The next thank you goes to the Board of Supervisors for their concurrence on the funding mechanisms that we came up with, and for the approvals of the Moncur Elementary School rebuild. I know I've got some happy constituents out there that they're finally going to get the school that they've been waiting forever for. And thank you to Chairman Cavalier on their Fab, on the BOS Fab, and Chairman Thomas for helping us kind of get to where we're at now. So thank you to them, and thank you to my counterpart on the BOS, which is Mr. Milde, for his support of this. I understand we've got financial impact forms, impact aid forms that are coming home, or going home with students. We need you guys to get them back into us, please. That all plays into our budget preparation, and we could use everybody's assistance in getting those back. And lastly, I've seen some wonderful dialogue on Facebook about the Professional Development Day that everybody had on Monday, and the feedback has been wonderful. So the planners and the folks who did all of the preparation for that, kudos, because I've never heard anything nicer than I've read over the past couple of days about the professional development. So congratulations to all of you. Thanks.
Mr. Hirons.
Nanette, like they said, we'll save our comments for when you, after you leave now, for your last meeting, but you will be deeply missed, and I'm very sad to hear you're leaving. I did want to say, I apologize for missing the meeting. The last time we had Board Member Comments, which was the first meeting after school started, so I want to give my welcome back to all the students and staff now, and for the students preparing for that first report card to be coming home in not too long from now. So you better be studying, working hard. On that first, or prior to the first day of school, I had the opportunity to spend time with the Falmouth staff, staff at Falmouth Elementary School. It was an amazing day. The principal there put together a program for her staff called the Amazing, it was based on the Amazing Race. She had a specific name, and it just totally slipped my mind there. It was incredibly fun. It was a blast. The staff there really had a great time getting together, working together as teams to solve problems, and we all enjoyed lunch. Everybody, every team was successful and made it to the lunch location. Couple of teams a little late, but they eventually made it and figured out the clues. It was really incredible. The Band Together to Fight Hunger, I can't agree more. It's an incredible event that has gone on now for five years. I believe she just, they just said that this is the fifth year. I think it's probably about time that we go ahead and give them their own agenda item, so they do not have to sign up for citizen comment time when they're coming in to give their announcements, because it is one meeting event that I look forward to every year. I absolutely love those band uniforms and the band major uniforms, and those band majors, they're just such great leaders, great representatives of our students in Stafford County. The agenda item, and then, I don't know if we've ever done any recognition, but I think we should probably look towards an award for the work that has gone into that over the years, and the number of people that have been fed off of that event. It's, their numbers are just staggering, and to watch that semi-truck be filled up that evening is really neat. So that's all I have for tonight.
Ms. Ayers.
Good evening, Madam Chair, everyone. A couple of weeks ago, I attended the Parks and Rec Committee meeting and had the pleasure of meeting, participating with Mr. Will Dos and his scouts. They came in to witness, observe a local governing committee or organization at work, and they were schooled on how a group of people who were elected or appointed, depending on their position requirements, made decisions that affected the area that they lived in. They also got an understanding of how we apply Robert's Rules of Order while we were making those decisions. So it was quite a wonderful event to see this group of scouts volunteering from troops across Stafford, coming together and participating in this event. And I also attended the advisory committee orientation. I learned a lot. I was only able to attend the Fine Arts, Performing Arts Committee meeting, but I'm going to look forward to attending more of those events and more of the meetings as well. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to...
I would just like to, again, I won't speak to Nanette because it will make me emotional, so I will just defer for a while. But again, thank you for so much that you've taught me when I came on to the board, so I'll leave it at that. I would really like to do a great shout out and congratulations to our Stafford Education Foundation on its successful golf tournament. Special thanks to Kathy Oblonsky, our Chair of the Stafford Foundation, and Robert Soul of Apple Federal Credit Union, who was our golf tournament Chair. Although the final tally is not in, so I can't share it, I can, I can say that the Stafford Education Foundation more than met its established goal of raising $20,000 for this, which will be going to scholarship and to teacher innovative grants, which is really exciting, that I'm so glad that the Stafford Foundation is up and running again with some great goals. I'd also just like to say it's been so wonderful being in our schools, seeing the excitement and seeing the wonderful classrooms. Dr. Benson and I made sort of an impromptu visit to Hartwood and we got to have a good time watching our students exploring and trying to figure out what was in a box. It was just as much fun. I couldn't wait for them to open it either. I'm excited for my pen pal at Rocky Run and it was an honor this past weekend to go to an Eagle Scout ceremony that shows the great accomplishments of our, of our students who happened to also be scouts and how much they are leaders within our community, and that was just an honor to be there. So again, I know homecomings are coming up, so everybody be safe on the roads and you probably do not want to go out to dinner on Saturday night. I will turn this over to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just, just a thank you to Ms. Kidby, and I know you'll get lots of these in the, in the coming weeks, but I very much appreciate your support as my first chair here in Stafford and, and the contributions that you've made to the work of the board and to the community. You will be very much missed, but thank you.
Is that all? Anything? Okay. All right, we will be moving on to our consent items. Are there?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Aye.
Are there, although, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent has been approved. Moving on to our action item, 8.01, which is our school board budget priorities.
Mrs. Kidby, would you like to take this, Madam Chair?
Would you like to make a motion? Yeah, I'd like to move for approval, please.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded regarding our school board fiscal budget priorities. Are there any comments or edits this evening? I know that you may see in the red line version, we had made the changes as suggested. I don't hear any. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our information items, we will start with 9.01. This is, I believe, about our renewal regarding retiree insurance. Are there any questions or inquiries regarding this item? All right. Hearing none, we will see that back on consent next in two weeks. Moving on to 9.02 regarding approving the division-wide subject area textbook adoption committees for social studies. I believe you have seen all the, and this is just for the formation of the committees, not expenditures.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Kidby, let's see, that will go to?
Is she here?
Dr. Strike or to Mrs. or Dr. Duffy?
Dr. Duffy?
Either one.
Is Dr. Duffy here?
Dr. Strike's here, too.
Oh.
And Dr. Strike's over here as well, so either one.
Just a real general question, Dr. Duffy. I wanted to ask whether or not we're, we're following the same standard procedures with putting these committees together as we've done in the past, whether you've made any significant changes?
Nope, same policy.
Okay, terrific. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
All right. Any further questions? All right. Moving on to 9.03, approved contracted services for Allied Instructional Services, Inc. I believe this is Dr. Clark. Dr. Clark, is there anything you would like to share about this item or?
Just very briefly, I wasn't really sure that it needed to come to your attention. Back in August, Dr. Benson, through a Friday communication, informed you of our need to contract out for some specialty positions. This was one of them. We got creative on a couple, but overall, we did have to contract out for, for a psychologist, a couple nurses, and this vision teacher. In the contract exceeds $100,000, but we do have a full-time equivalent within the budget, so the delta is, it's not certainly $100,000 total, but because it reads that way in the contract, we thought that you would want to be aware of that.
Are there any questions about this particular item? Was it more in terms of we weren't able to fill this position?
We were not.
I mean, specialty.
Teacher for the vision and, and vision impaired and blind. It's interesting with this contract, it's a private vendor, very reputable agency, we like them a lot, and they provided us also an intern that comes along with the teacher. Excellent teacher, trained in orientation and mobility, which is teaching kids who are blind to maneuver around the school and community, school community setting, and additional staff with a vision teacher intern. So hopefully we'll, we may not be able, may not have to contract out next year, but same issue continues in some of these specialties, psychologists, speech therapists, and nurses still.
Is there any reason, either Dr. Clark or Dr. Benson, that we should, that this should be moved to action so we can secure this or are we fine? That would be my question to either of you.
It would be great since we've, the contract is underway.
Right.
Just have one question. So was the FTE budgeted, though?
It was, yes.
So are we freeing up an FTE for, it says budgeted, no.
It should, the contracted service in that amount was not fully budgeted, but the FTE is.
It's going to go towards it.
So it goes toward the contract and we transferred.
The cost for contracted services, it's more expensive than FTE.
What's the delta?
Is it 100 grand more expensive?
No.
About 20, 25 to 30,000 more expensive than the FTE is going to cost us.
So, so, you know, that was my, that was my genesis of the question is, it would, that's okay, we could do, we could contract for 101 and just put that contract money and then, but then that would free up a 68,000 FTE that we can rehire. I mean, so either.
Well, we're moving the money from the FTE, implying it towards this contract.
So the amount would be 20, 20, 30 grand?
Correct.
And in our calculations overall, number of FTEs would go down by one.
Yes.
Yes.
But we're not just freeing up an FTE and filling it, we're using the money from that FTE towards this contract.
If I may. But it looked like our staff reduced by one person.
Yes.
From one FTE.
Staff employed by SEPS.
And as we're building the budget next year, we're still going to build that FTE in since we will have that need, either through contracted or through actually being able to hire a person.
We will. Our hope is to be able to contract from, within the school division and we will probably increase our contracted service line, too, since we're seeing that trend in multiple areas.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't want to lose the FTE out of the budget.
No.
Yeah, okay.
So, so back, I guess back to the, for Chris, back to the question, so would, wouldn't it, would it not be just, we'd explain about the FTE difference here and put like the difference that we're not budgeted? I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't it be $30,000 the amount not budgeted?
Yes, correct.
Not 101 not budgeted, but 30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
It's just that the contract reads 101.
Yeah, no, I mean, I get, I get why you put it there. I was just trying to, and that's, like I said, if we could, but that would give us another FTE, because we do need folks, right? Okay.
So is there?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we take this to action.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move item 9.03 to action. Any discussion? All those.
Should we, are we going to just change the amount?
Well, it sounds like the, the amount of the contract that we have to approve is the 100,000.
Okay.
The delta, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I have a feeling that when they've signed the contract, it's not going to say 30,000.
What I think we should do is thank staff for bringing this, because in the past, I think they would have done this without our knowledge.
Right.
And it would be one of the things that we'd ask about later, hopefully.
Yeah, well, and that's why I wanted, for the record, I wanted it, so we do review.
But you're right. If it's right, it's right. Right now, it feels like $30,000 is not budgeted.
Yeah. I would just say, I would just say, yeah, approve with just, and please add in the notes. We have taken a deck around of the FTE, just so it's correct.
So this particular motion will be to move it to action, so let's do that first. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has been moved, I mean, item has been moved to action. Follow-on motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move for approval of 9.03 with an asterisk indicating that the real change in budget is approximately $30,000 for this fiscal year.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our staff reports, I know that we will be bringing Mrs. Cale forward.
Is Ms. Cale heading up this way?
She is coming. Sort of a follow-on from last time, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I thank Mrs. Cale for my, and everyone else's paper copies?
I didn't want the paper copies, just for the record.
I'll take it.
But I appreciate it.
You can remember all those numbers, I can't when I look at them.
It'd be great reading for you, excellent reading. Yes, we do have paper copies for you for Attachment A, which are the regular class-size report for this current year, 2016-2017, and the comparison charts in Attachment B, and of course, our presentation. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson. I stand before you tonight to present Stafford County Public Schools 2016-2017 Elementary Class Size Report. Last year, the Board approved Stafford County Public Schools staffing standards, which provided a compass for how we provide human capital resources in our schools. The Board decided to focus human capital resources predominantly in our elementary The elementary class size report is based on student enrollment as of September 30th, 2016.
Hold on, is that Dr. Benson?
Do you believe it is?
How many cheese points do you guys get for that?
Hey, he's a new student. Facebook, we found it.
Now, don't get me wrong, I'd probably do the same thing if I were in your position, but.
Actually, we wanted to make sure you were paying attention and you noticed. Good job. Great job.
You didn't have to count him.
That's right. This presentation includes the following information: average class sizes at each school, the average size by grade level at each school, the frequency of classes from 17 to 28, the comparison between class ranges for 2015-16 and 2016-17, and the number of classrooms exceeding the adopted staffing standards. For the 2016-2017 school year, our projected enrollment was 27,919 students. As of 9/30/16, our school enrollment was 28,098 students. This is a difference of 179 students division-wide. Elementary enrollment was 120, excuse me, elementary enrollment was 174 students over projection. Middle school was under by 57 students and high school was over by 62. Our enrollment was 27,556 students on September 30th, 2015. Consequently, we have 542 more students than last year as of 9/30/16 division-wide. Elementary enrollment increased by 354 students from last year. As you can see, our division enrollment is steadily increasing, which will require an increase in human capital. I'm only showing you a couple of slides like this, you have those in your handouts, just to show how we're doing our comparisons this year. The average class size at the elementary level is 22.9, ranging from 21.3 at Hartwood Elementary School to 25 at Garrisonville Elementary School. Please note that two teacher positions have been added to Garrisonville Elementary School since the time of the enrollment, so that has changed. For the 2015-2016 school year, the average class size at the elementary level was 23.78. This is a reduction of almost one student per class. The average class size by grade levels is kindergarten 22, first grade 21.4, second grade 22.6, third grade 22.8, fourth grade 24.5, and fifth grade 24.2. Please notice that the average class size for grades four and five have improved since 2015-2016 by about two students per class. The majority of our elementary classes have a class size frequency of 20 to 24 students. There's a slight difference between the number of class size frequency of 23 to 24 students. We do have some classrooms that are servicing 28 students. Please note, though, we have added teaching positions to address this issue. This class size frequency is an outlier due to the very low percentage in which this is occurring. I would like to provide the Board a great span view of our class size frequency over the past three years. When comparing the number of kindergarten to second grade classes between 2015-16 and 2016-17, there are 30 instances where we see the number of classes with 25 to 27 students. Please note, this is a decrease of 12 classes from the 2015-2016 school year. We have also continued our trend from last school year with no classes with 28 or more students in grades K through two within our division. When comparing the number of third through fifth grade classes between 2015-16 and 2016-17, the number of classes with 25 to 27 students decreased by 6.38 percent, or six classes. With regard to the number of classes with 28 or more students, we have decreased the number of classes by 83.33 percent, 40 classes. The number will further decrease with the hiring of additional teachers at Rocky Run and Margaret Brent Elementary Schools. Have we met our goals as defined by Stafford County Public Schools staffing standards? Based on elementary staffing standards, kindergarten classes should not exceed 24 students without having a full-time dedicated paraprofessional that is hired in addition to those existing. Grades one through three should not exceed 26 students per class, and grades four through five should not exceed 27 students per class. For kindergarten, this data displays elementary classrooms exceeding the staffing standards as of 9/30/2016. Across all elementary schools, there were a total of seven kindergarten classes with 25 or more students. This number has been reduced to two classes as two new kindergarten teachers have started this week. Full-time paraprofessionals have been assigned to the remaining two classrooms. Grades one through three, we have no classrooms exceeding the staffing standards for grades one through three. Grades four through five, there are eight classes exceeding the standards at grades four and five. This number will be reduced by five with the hiring of two new teachers at Rocky Run and Margaret Brent. The remaining three classes will continue to be monitored. As shared with you previously, once no-show students were removed, average class sizes remain below the cap. Students didn't withdraw, such that the classes could be evenly distributed. Staff does not recommend students at this, moving students at this time. Of course, there are seats available at other classes in those grade levels. We're reviewing potential resources available to support these classes. We are proud of the improvements we have made through the support of the Board, and we will continue to strive to reach our goal of having every classroom meeting Stafford County Public Schools staffing standards. As always, we will continue to monitor elementary class sizes throughout the 2016-2017 school year. I look forward to presenting to the Board the 2016-2017 Secondary Class Report within the next couple of weeks. The next board meeting in October, we will be presenting the middle school class report, and then the meeting in November, the high school class report. And I'd also like to add a special thanks to folks, it takes, it's team always, and special thanks to Nicole Stewart and our Technology Department for doing such a fantastic job pulling all of the data, and another special thanks to Dr. Teresa Aberg and Dr. Elena Parrish for their hard work, too.
Good.
Any questions?
Are there any questions?
I did have one. Ms. Cale, could you explain particularly in fourth grade and fifth grade, how we count the number of students? I know there are students that will come into a classroom from special ed for a period or two throughout the day. Now, my question is, are those included in the count or are those, since they are exceptions, not included in the count?
That's a great question. They're not included in the count because it's the students that are in that room as a homeroom all day, and those students often come with additional help.
Help when they come in.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Was there any other comments or?
I'd just like to make a comment. I don't have a question, if you don't mind. Great work by the staff, you know, keeping, keeping a track, keeping track of this hard, hard data, especially when it comes to class sizes, very important. It's probably one of the, you know, for our constituents and the folks that are, you know, have their kids in the school and they're supporting the schools, this is, this is very, very important to them. So, and I appreciate you and your staff and Saberg and everyone else's work on this. This coming to us every so often is a great, is a, is great for our visibility and we can pass on to our constituents.
Absolutely.
And then hopefully, next year, we can either refine this a little bit or maybe even move on to middle school where we have a few issues with, with staff, you know, if we have extra staffing, but that's something that we've discussed at the, in our budget priorities and what have you. So, I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy where we're at. I'd be happier when all classes have 19, but in elementary.
You've got to build some class.
But we have to start somewhere, right? Okay, good.
I would just like to say, I'm, I'm very, very happy with this. I mean, the Board really committed to doing this. I know Dr. Benson has very much said in the past, you know, if everything's important, nothing's important. This was very much a priority of the Board and we thank staff. It's great when we all get behind it. We're going into strategic planning, we have strategic communications and using a strategic use of our budget priorities to do that. It, it's been a great impact for our kids and our students, because this year I did not have those phone calls and it's very exciting. However, I do know, and I would say to our Board, I always, you know, I am ecstatic about this, however, we are going to have to, at some point, look at space as we continue to grow. When we're adding seven, seven sections of a certain grade, somebody's moving. And that can be music, that can be other things, and it's just something, I think as we move forward, this is not as much, you know, Mrs. Cale, is, will we be able to meet these standards going forward within our current facilities? And I think that's a question we will be, need to explore, but I am myself personally very thrilled that where we are sitting today.
Madam Chair, that's a very good point. I know over at Winding Creek, they have seven fifth grade classes now and, and the desire is to keep the class sizes so that the children have the optimal learning environment, but space then becomes an issue and also their specials become an issue. As we, as we look at these, we have to keep all those things in mind. So, I appreciate that comment.
Madam Chair, I did want to add real quick that we were able to accomplish this pretty heavily because of state funding that was expanded a little bit last year or added to a little bit last year. We may not, we may be a little bit more challenged this coming year, but we have set our priorities and I do hope the Board remains committed to those priorities to really focus on these classroom sizes, because we do have a good success story here. We are on the right path.
Yes.
Our path to, to have, you know, these smaller classrooms, which is beneficial to our students, to our parents, to our teachers, and I hope we can continue that trend. Thank you to the staff for their hard work.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Cale. Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cale. Moving on to our, we want to move on to our closed session. Ms. Ziegan, do you have a, can you read us?
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss the compensation of personnel pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session.